Everybody, everybody ready?
Yep.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 3rd, 2014 meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett.
Here.
Member Brindle.
Here.
Member Sprague.
Here.
Member Swenson.
Here.
Mayor Havlin.
Here. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us. I think Manager Neil sent an email out today. Member Swenson, do you want to take care of modifying the agenda?
I'd like to remove HRA 6 from the agenda for tonight. Otherwise, I will approve the re- make a motion to move the rest of the agenda.
Second.
But, just a short note. At our last council meeting, we told you that we were going to add an item to this agenda, asking the council to approve a set of joint operating goals with the school district. Those operating goals were adjusted between the last time we talked about it and when the school board took action on them. So, we're going to get the new amended version of that, and we'll bring it to the council for the meeting on February 18.
Is that like the adjusted adjusted?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Anything else you wanted to add or delete from the agenda? Manager Neil, you sent an email about-
I believe that's it.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda, less the HRA item 6 being removed. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. I've got a note to myself here that I need to make an apology to my council, fellow council members, but I'm going to save that for concerns of mayor and council. So, we've got a consent agenda. This has to do with Braemar, just so folks know about that. All right, adoption of the consent agenda. And we've got four items there. Anyone want to remove an item from the consent agenda? Member Bennett?
Yes, thank you. I would like to remove item 4C, please.
All right. Utley Park restroom issue. Anything else? All right. With the exception of 4C being removed from the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. Now to 4C, which is the proposed cost for engineering services to redo, or put in bathrooms, I guess, at Utley Park. Member Bennett?
Redo.
Redo?
Redo, and I think it's a contractual. I am going to defer to Manager Neil on this.
It is. Thank you, Councilmember Bennett, and members of the council. As I think you're aware, and we do this from time to time, we've discussed this concept. Engineering services agreements and other kinds of professional service agreements, we have a master agreement for professional engineering services. So, we, instead of agreeing to a number of exclusions or deletions from, in a contract that's presented to us by an outside vendor, we give the vendor the contract that we want, that we've prepared, and we ask them to agree to our terms. And we've done that with all of the professional engineering services agreements that you see before you. This one, we got a little bit late in the pack at preparation process, but, so Bolton and Mank provided their standard agreement, and that's what was in the packet. But we had, they have agreed to our master agreement for professional services, and I've got a number of copies of that here, and we can pass those out to council as you see fit. Sure. Yep. But they have agreed to our standard terms like every other professional engineer, and we request that you approve that agreement with that stipulation.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So then, Manager Neil, we're looking for a motion not on the letter of agreement or the two-page, three-page document that was in front of us for this evening, but rather this master agreement.
That is correct, that we're asking you to approve the master agreement with Bolton and Mank.
So, the cost remains the same?
Yes.
The terms are more to our standard-
That's correct. The terms would be our standard terms that we ask any other engineering-
Together with their supplemental agreement.
Okay. Which sets the terms of this actual project.
Yes.
I will move that, Your Honor.
I'll second it.
All right. Got a motion and a second on those two particular contracts. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. And next, special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. Manager Neil is saying no, nothing this evening. And we have one public hearing this evening, and that is for the Nakamori Japanese Bistro that would like a liquor license. Clerk Mangan.
Thank you, Your Honor, and Mayor and Council. The Nakamori Japanese Bistro has made an application to the city for an intoxicating on-sale and Sunday liquor license to operate at 7101 France Avenue and on number 113. They have filed all the necessary documentation. The administration department, health department, planning department, and police department have reviewed the application. The police department has completed their background investigation with no negative findings, and so staff is putting the licenses in front of you for your favorable consideration.
Thank you. Questions for Clerk Mangan?
Can I have a description of where 7101 France Avenue is, since I've given away my iPad, which would be my go-to-
The Rue de France.
It's Rue de France.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Hazelton is 72nd, 71st.
So Rue de France is where the camera place is, the bagel place is. So where is this within that building?
It's, if you know where Bruegers is here, and then the various shops, including Kohler and Palah, it's in that center section.
Okay.
Center section between Caribou, Bruegers, and Ethan Allen.
Between Ethan Allen and-
Ethan Allen.
Perfect. The France Avenue address confused me.
Any other questions from council? I'm going to open this matter up for public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and testify or comment regarding the proposed license issuance? Seeing no one coming forward and hearing nothing, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. Is there a motion regarding this new on-sale liquor license? We've got a motion and a second to approve the on-sale intoxicating liquor license and Sunday on-sale liquor license to Nakamori Japanese Inc., DBA Nakamori Japanese Bistro. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. Folks, anybody want to come forward and talk about the bistro at all? And tell us what you're going to be having there for folks to enjoy? This is your chance to get a little plug-in for your restaurant. Huh? Well, come on up here and give us your name and address.
And talk on the microphone.
And you can, you can tell the whole city of Edina or everybody that watches what they can expect to find at Nakamori. Come on up. Take one of those side microphones, if you would, please, and give us your name and address, and tell us a little bit about your business.
Okay. Hi, my name is Teresa, and the Nakamori is located at 2101 France Avenue South. Well, we're serving sushis, and we have hibachi in there.
Hmm.
Yeah, and, well, I hope you guys will sometime come to visit, and we'll hope you like it.
All right. So you know you've got your liquor license. When are you planning to open?
Right now, we still on, like, have the building department to come check in, so probably within like two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yeah.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Good luck. Thank you.
All right. That was the only public hearing we had this evening. And now, we're going to go on to a community comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment regarding a matter that's not on the agenda this evening? All right, we're going to move on to reports and recommendations section of the agenda. First matter there is the draft Edina Active Routes to School Comprehensive Plan presentation, which is quite a fine piece of work, I must say, and a great group of folks that worked on this.
Mayor and members of the council, we have Joette Kunal with Kimberly-Horn with us tonight to present the report that's in front of you.
Ms. Kunal, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you-
Would you give us your full name and address, please, your business address?
Sure. My name is Joette Kunal. I work for Kimberly-Horn and Associates. Our address is 2550 University Avenue West in St. Paul.
All right. Thank you.
The plan that I think all of you have received within the past week or so is the product of work that we started in November of 2012, and have been working with a number of staff from the city, from the school district, as well as the Transportation Commission and parents within the community to look at walking and biking to school and how to make improvements to make that safer and a more enjoyable activity for students in Edina. Tonight, I just want to talk a little bit about, give you an overview of the plan and how it was developed, a little bit of the information and the data from, that are behind the plan, some of the recommendations that are coming out of the plan, and then talk a little bit about the next steps of the plan. Active routes to school, it's also often referred to as safe routes to school. There's a working group that I mentioned that's been working on this project for over a year, and one of the discussions that we had was about calling it active routes rather than safe routes as a more accurate description of what the program's intent really is. It really is intended to increase physical activity, part of that being increasing safety, but it really is about active transportation. And this is a nationwide effort. It started at the federal level, and there was federal funding identified. Walking and biking to school has declined significantly since the 1960s from over 50% to less than 15% today. And that's pretty consistent with what we see in Edina in terms of the number of students that are walking and biking today. The studies that have been done show that active transportation and more physical activity not only has health benefits, but it's been shown to also improve academic performance as well as decreasing traffic around our schools, which has environmental benefits as well as traffic benefits. So there are a number of aspects to this type of program. The development of the plan was funded through the statewide health improvement project, program, and so it was funded by Bloomington Public Health. And really, the goal of the plan is to serve as a vision for the community and look at how the city and the school district and the community as a whole can work together to improve conditions for walking and biking. And that means not only infrastructure, but it also means policies and other programs and efforts such as enforcement to really look at the issue holistically. One other thing that the comprehensive plan does is that as funding becomes available, either through the state or from other sources, for example, MINDOT now requires that to be able to apply for their safe routes to school funding, there needs to be a plan in place. And so, if you're applying for funding for a project, it needs to be part of a more holistic vision, not just a one-time project. And so, having this plan in place really sets the city up to be able to apply for that funding. So, the plan was developed by, we first started by gathering data, not only traffic data, but student data from the district about where students live and what some of the current mode choices are. We had multiple visits to each of the public schools in the district. And then, we did spend a lot of time going to each school, interviewing principals. There was a parent survey that was released last spring. There was a session with the Edina High School Student Council. And then, as I mentioned, there's a working group that's been meeting throughout to provide input to the plan. Here is a chart that is based on some data that was collected in schools in fall of 2012, and this represents the average trips to and from school, how students currently arrive to school. And as you can see, a significant number arrived to and from school by school bus. Family vehicle is next. Walking and biking together is about 14%, and that's somewhat consistent with what we see nationwide. As part of the parent survey, one of the important questions on that survey was what factors influence decisions to walk and bike? And so, I've just highlighted in red that the top four factors that were identified across the board. And as you can see, a number of them are related to traffic volumes, traffic speeds, and safety of intersections and crossings. So those are related to infrastructure and, you know, would be related to future investments that the city might choose to make. Some of the other things that we also found through that survey were that the discontinuous routes, where there's a portion of a route, but it maybe doesn't go all the way into the neighborhood, again, related to infrastructure, that was something important that folks identified, as well as school patrol and having adults available to assist with crossings. Then, as we gathered all this data and looked at what some of the issues were about walking and biking to school, we started to develop recommendations and classify those as short-term, midterm, and long-term. The short-term were improvements that could be made, maybe they had a lower cost to them or were easier to implement, they could be done in the short term. Some of the longer-term investments would be things that require a more significant investment or may include policy changes, things that would require coordination among agencies or a shift in policy. Then, we also looked at who would be the lead agency for each of those improvements? Would it be the city, the school district, or in some cases, it would need to be a joint effort? So some of the short-term recommendations that we looked at, one of the things, the city actually went through a significant effort a few years ago to look at school speed zones, and those are in place at all of the public schools in the district. However, enforcement of those zones was something that came up, both in the parent survey and, I believe, in some of the after-studies from the school speed zones that would make them more effective with increased enforcement. Another issue that came up, and we actually had some discussion with the Transportation Commission about this issue, was about bicycling on sidewalks. Sort of the national recommendation is that children under 10 years old don't have the judgment and the skills necessary to ride on the street, and so the safest place really is for them to be on the sidewalk. And so, some of the discussions that have been held with the city in the past about the current ordinance and what changes might need to be made to accommodate that. Some of the joint city-district issues that were identified were related to public education, making people aware of this plan, establishing the working group as a permanent group that would work together on walking and biking issues around school. And then, the, actually, the photo that's on this slide is a picture on Valley View Road near the high school and middle school. There have been some studies there in the past. There are, still continue to be some issues there, and as, as one of the members of the working group said, "We can do better." And so, continuing to spend some effort there to see what can be done to not only reduce the vehicle demand, but also make it safer. Some other things that were talked about, bicycle parking was something we looked at quite a bit. A number of the racks that are at the schools could be really upgraded and moved to better locations where they actually are convenient to the entrances and more visible. That, you know, vandalism or theft of bicycles can be a concern for parents, and having them in a better location can help with that. Relative to the school district's website, having, they have information about riding the bus and bus safety. There is not currently any information about walking and biking or about walking and biking routes. And so, really trying to make walking and biking as a transportation mode equal to riding the bus. Certainly, as part of this plan, we recognize not all students are able to walk or bike to school for various reasons. They live too far away, they have before and after-school activities, but for students that can, we want to make that a good choice for them. We also talked about incorporating walking and biking into the physical education curriculum as sort of a lifetime skill and something that they can do throughout their lives. Many of the midterm and long-term improvements were higher investments of infrastructure. So, the city has a very good sidewalk plan and a very good bicycle plan, and so starting to implement some of the projects that are already identified in those plans, particularly where they relate to schools. As, as we looked at some of the sites, there were also some opportunities, in addition to improving bicycle parking, to do things like narrow driveways or build sidewalks on the site that would allow students to not have to cross such wide pavement areas. They don't have to cross the stream of parent traffic that are coming into and out of schools to really make walking and biking safer as well as more attractive as they're coming into the site. So at this stage in the, in our process, we are gathering comments, not only from the Transportation Commission, but also you as the city council. A staff member of the school district has been presenting this plan also to various committees that are part of the school district. At this point, we're gathering input with the eventual goal that the plan would be adopted by both the city council and the school board. So, that as we move forward, that plan is in place, we can begin to look for funding sources and other ways to really enact the changes that, that we've been talking about and look for funding sources to do some of those things. So with that, I am happy to take any comments or questions that you have tonight. I did want to mention that any, it's, there's a lot of information in the plan, so if there are future comments or questions, Mark Nolan will be collecting those comments and questions through the end of this month and consolidating all of those. The working group will be getting back together to review comments, not only from this group, but from the school board and school district committees as well.
Good. Thank you. Member Swenson?
On page 22, you talk about how some of these are paid for, and I'm just not sure how accurate that is to our current funding. Since we've established a franchise fee, where does that come into this?
And you're-
Okay.
The, the construction of pedestrian, new pedestrian facilities?
Are you, under the however, you mentioned our change in funding, I think is what you're saying, Member Bennett, but I just think that's confusing.
Okay.
So, we do have a franchise fee. We use it for local, low-volume street zones so that we don't have to charge them 100% special property assessment, which hasn't been working for us effectively for eight years, which is why we put in this funding mechanism. So I, I just need it to be clear that this is, you know, other than state aid funding and potential grants for safe routes to schools or whatever I should be calling those now, that those, those three vehicles seem to be our main funding now, and that I don't know anything currently we've done by assessment, though there might be a discussion as to school participation in some of these sidewalks.
Yeah, that's a great point.
That's probably still potentially on the table, because we haven't really established yet, if I'm not mistaken, from the Transportation Commission exactly. Have we passed the protocol of funding it? No?
Well, we, we did concur on a PACS basis, but we haven't talked about the future.
Going forward.
We transitioned, basically-
Right.
The policy is we transitioned from special assessment to PACS.
Just a quick observation before Member Bennett goes. What I hear you saying is that there ought to be a section here that talks about funding potential public improvements and the source of those funds. So it's clear.
Yeah.
Member Bennett?
Well, and to Member Swenson's point, what is here, the bullet points of, with the past policy, do get a little confusing because it draws the eye, and a person sees that list, and the text description below of the change doesn't, I think, catch the eye as much. So I think it would be clearer to discard, basically discard, I think, what's no longer in place. And then, to Member Sprague's question, it's my understanding that the Living Streets Committee is working on recommending implementation. The policy's been adopted. Now, they're working on priorities, a sidewalk prioritization to help decisions in what gets built when, and then, I think, also addressing some of those questions about divisions of funding that you just raised.
Member Sprague?
Thank you. One, one link that's missing for the Cornelia Zone, and those links are on page, let's see if I can find it, is Oaklawn Avenue. And basically, that, that connects students-
29, possibly?
Is that where this?
Page 29.
No.
Is it with a graph?
There's a list of segments that, it's in the beginning, I think, that's why I haven't found it here.
But it does talk on 29 about constructing pad ramps at, well, 72nd and Oaklawn.
That's, and, and the point I'm making is, that's one part of that network, but the missing segment is Oaklawn. Because Oaklawn connects from where they would like to do that trail connection at the end of the cul-de-sac, and then, that would take students down that street so they could funnel from those Guilford, Fondelle, and so on, funnel down, and then walk up all the way up to the school. And then, the northerly segment is already on, Cornelia Drive, that's already on this list. So I think we need to add Oaklawn. I mentioned that to Planner Nolan, but I wanted to make sure that's noted here as well.
Member Sprague, that is depicted on the map at the back. It's figure 10 for Cornelia Elementary, and it does show the dashed line for the recommended sidewalk.
Where, where are you?
Right here.
Again, figure 10, and the key is a little difficult to read in the multi-generational copy. We lose a little bit of a contrast with the print against the gray.
For Oaklawn sidewalks?
Yep.
One comment, as he's looking at that, that he, that Member Sprague just told me is, you know, we put the little connector across the park just north of the Fred Rich Golf, Fred Richards Golf Course, and-
We're working, we're working.
Okay.
No, no, no. The little, the one we built last summer, and I'll let you speak, so now they're-
No, E3 is a page, I'm sorry. So City of Edina improvements, and it lists the group of sidewalks for Cornelia. It shows it on the map, to your point, but it doesn't have it in this, on the bullet point, that's all.
Anyway, apparently, the students from that area walking to school, they had a better outcome with kids coming to the summer program-
Yep.
And that those kids using that path to get to school feel way more part of the neighborhood in their school. So, I just-
That's news from the-
We need to hear that, because there was some pushback on that, and I think it's important that we know that something we did had a change, you know, a change that could be heard.
That was, that was news from the principal I just met with, and he said that those families felt much more welcome now that that segment was in and that, that, that summer enrollment went up. So, immediate benefit. The other, the other comment was, I notice on implementation for encouragement on page 26, it lists some of the programs, walk-to-bike-to-school days, training and scheduling of guards and so on. And then, at the end, it says, "Implementation leads City of Edina." And I'm confused because most of that education is related to school, school site, and it's school site program, so why would we be the lead? It seems like the school district would be the lead on that one. Busing, chaperones, classroom competitions, that would all originate with the school. And then, on, on the bike rack funding, in your experience, is that coming out of the general pool of safe route to school resources that are listed in the back?
Yes. Actually, bike racks are something that have historically been funded both by safe routes to school funding that could come through, like, the Department of Transportation, but bike racks are also something that can be funded even through ship funding. In general, ship cannot be used for infrastructure, but one of the exceptions is bike racks. And so, that actually is one area that there are a number of different sources of funding.
Okay, and I think we've, we've used ship in the past for bike racks. It seems to me we had a plan that former Director Houle had put together, and we discussed. My last comment is on safety, page 7, it says on the, that first paragraph at the end, "This indicates a potential need for increased safety education to give children the skills to safely walk and bike in the community." I also think a campaign for drivers should be a part as well. We've talked about, I showed C-Safe Smart, which was a Rochester campaign, and I know Planner Nolan has something like that in the works that they're working on with the ETC. ETC, but it should be noted that it has to happen at both ends, both the user end for the bikers and walkers, and the drivers as well.
Yeah.
And some of that will come from enforcement as well, I'm guessing, that awareness piece.
Yeah. With the decrease from 60% to 10% over time of kids walking or biking to school, people are less aware of them, so I think that's a great idea, get them reeducated, seeing kids out there. Member Bennett, and then Member Brindle.
Thank you. Looking at some of the short-term improvements, I would like to see us move toward ones that aren't tied toward adoption of this report in a more immediate way, particularly the bicycle riding on the sidewalk. I think that's one that, I'm not sure how we ended up with the ordinance that we did. Apparently, we're an outlier compared with other communities. There's a lot of attention paid to age, but I think it's more speed. I think that there are people of all ages who aren't comfortable on roadways, just as there are people who are, riding in a bike lane or sharing space. And I think tying it, as has been recommended in this, to the speed of the cyclist, also putting in a rule that there be right-of-way given to the pedestrian in all cases, and then third, that the ride or not ride on sidewalks that are posted, no riding. Notice that in Boulder, Colorado, their downtown is posted. We can post downtown areas, we can also post where there's sidewalk on two sides of the street. We can post one of them if we choose, depending on what we want to do with signage. But I think that's something that, it's winter now, we're heading into spring, and I'd like to see us take more immediate action.
I'm good with that.
Me too, might as well.
Another, another one that I think requires a little more look, looking, is the enforcement in the school zones agreeing with points that my colleagues have made. I do think that use of cell phones in that area can be a problem. If we were going to look at something with that, I think that we would want to guide or restrict their use only in a moving vehicle, not in the zone itself, because that's, I think, how people communicate with the people they're trying to pick up.
And they, at the high school, the police had a program with the kids. They were doing some type of compliance check one year, and trying to get kids not to text as they were leaving, driving out of the parking lot, so that makes sense to expand that to everybody.
I think the enforcement, the rolling enforcement that the police department has been doing, where they pick an issue every month and really highlight it, is going both to education and to enforcement, and to continue that program going forward, I think, also would be good.
Yeah.
The third thing that, the third point that I wanted to raise about more immediate improvements, I guess they probably put it as midterm, is crosswalks. And I think that standardizing, I noticed this in Seattle, their crosswalks are identical. They're very old style, but they're all over the place, and the vehicles recognize them, and the pedestrians recognize them, and they're also recognized in their absence. If they're not there, people know that that's not a place that they're supposed to park, I mean, to cross. Understanding that we are a less, many parts of our city are not urban at all, but I do think that that standardized use, and this report makes, makes an issue out of what is most highly visible, and I'd like to see, to, I'd like us to look at the research, choose something, one, and implement that throughout the city, so that we get that recognition factor up, and hopefully the compliance factor as well. And then my last comment is, I was really impressed with the entire report, with its depth. I like the executive summary, that's always helpful, but I also like the amount of data that was provided and the types of data. There is a little bit of, the student travel tallies, there's a difference between what people reported in the surveys and what was observed at the schools. In most instances, what was reported in the surveys was greater than what was actually observed. Is that people's hopeful or wishful thinking, or the seasons in which the survey was taken?
That's actually a very good question, and that's something we see pretty consistently in other communities as well, is that in the survey, people do generally over-report. The travel tallies were taken in October of 2012. The survey was out in May of 2013. And part of the difference can be that, you know, for families that may walk, some of the time, they may report that they walk and bike. On this, the tally is taken two days, in a week, in this case, October, and so if they didn't happen to walk those days, how the tally works is the classroom teacher just asks, "How did you get to school today? If you rode the bus, raise your hand. If you walked, raise your hand." So there can absolutely be a difference between the reporting in the survey and what is actually counted on a specific day.
And one last observation, that is, we can build a network, as we tried to do in the Highlands neighborhood, but if that last point, and Member Swenson, you addressed that with your recommendation for the school road sidewalks, so I think we have addressed that at Concord. But the request or recommendation for narrowing those approaches at Cornelia, I think, is a big one, because what I think we see at Highlands is the facility can be there that brings kids and people up the street, but if the entrance point feels pinched or unsafe, people are not going to walk, and so we have to keep that in mind, I think, when we're building out this system.
Can I ask you a question about one of those comments? On the standardization of crosswalks, are you talking just in school zones or also outside of school zones? Because we've been using Duraprint a lot, I'm very, I like the Duraprint application, we can't do it on concrete, but it's something visible and that we've replicated, so I just was curious.
I would say, both as a walker who walks often at night, and a motorist coming home from meetings in the evening, I don't find Duraprint that visible. So I'm thinking that, as a city, just as cities distinguish themselves with signage, we might look to distinguish ourselves with crosswalks, not just in school zones, but citywide. Pick a pattern. I think this recommends zebras being the most visible, and then sticking with it throughout the city. And even just looking at the photographs that were used as examples here, the Duraprint did not stand out. Again, understanding that we've gone through generations of photocopying, and colors aren't as vivid, and just contrast not as clear. But that's been my experience, particularly on 44th Street. I don't find those crosswalks visible at night at all.
So you get the maintenance and the texture for the drivers, but not necessarily the night use, is what I hear you saying?
Right, either from a pedestrian perspective or vehicle.
Well, I do like the concept of being consistent in a use of sidewalks and look. And it may be that we're consistent, and we have two different ones. We might have a school zone crosswalk, and then we may have a general crosswalk, or whatever. You know, there's going to be a lot of feedback in the ensuing years, is what's the best idea? Do you have a different look, so people are more aware of when it's a school zone or not? But I do like the concept that we shouldn't have 50 different crosswalk patterns around town. That might be a slight exaggeration.
Member Brindle.
Thank you. This is a very complete report, one that, for me, takes more than one time through, because the first time through, it's a bit of a story of what the experience around each school is. And then the next time through really is to find the data points that allow you to weigh what is being talked about here. But as far as implementation, are there set goals, for example, of where we are, maybe this is the beginning point of where we are based on the parent surveys? Is there a goal where we'd like to be in two years and five years for seeing more kids walking to school versus, versus on the bus? And I don't know if there's an answer to that yet, but, but I think it would be, it would be good to know what, what are the projections that we can look at with the projected increase in population for us? How this gets used now is going to help us to keep it, keep it up to date, and keep it at a level that accommodates the increased population. In counting, I noticed, you know, on such-and-such-a-day, the count was this, or the count was that. Who counted, how often? How was the counting done?
The count of the pedestrians and bicycles. Most of the counting was done by me or my staff as we were doing our site visits, and most of them were done in the spring of 2013. As you may recall, the spring of 2013 was quite a protracted winter, and so certainly, and that was one of the reasons why we put a month and a year on it, because certainly it was not a count of multiple days, and so it is just one data point. We tried to pick days that were good weather, that were conducive to walking and biking, but it is only one data point. So that is where the tallies and the surveys also come into play about how much walking and biking there is.
Sure. Is it possible for us to get a copy of the PowerPoint you presented tonight? Because you have a pie chart there that, I looked at that, and I went, okay, good. I'm thinking, oh, I'd like that, because then I can just take that, that page and make it, and it's immediately meaningful, to me, anyway. Page E1. Page E1. Active routes to school plan plays an important function in connecting the roles of the school district and the city in jointly seeking to increase walking and biking to school. Who has, I mean, is the, is the school out front in wanting to promote active lifestyles for students? Is the city out front wanting to see this as a, as a healthy community asset? Where are we with each other?
I would say that the city is probably out front in terms of having already invested quite a lot of time and energy into developing a sidewalk plan, and a bicycling plan, and a living streets policy, and really have spent a lot of energy on those topics. The school district, I think, historically has not been as focused on that, and so there is a little bit of reconsideration, you know, just about things, as they're doing some site improvements, where is the best place to put bike racks? And so I think, as it stands right now, the city is probably a little bit ahead, but there are certainly partners at the school district who are very engaged in this, and really trying to bring that along, and get walking and biking specifically written into their wellness policy, and make some other changes that really are significant, because just infrastructure alone won't change behaviors. And so the district really does need to be a partner.
Well, and the district needs to be a partner in what a living street looks like when it's within a quarter mile of a school, versus within a quarter mile of a park. And so that, that makes sense to me. Just one last point, and that is, I think drivers need a big dose of education as it relates to stop signs. At a four-way stop, it was my turn tonight, and I was blown off, and she went right through, and I proceeded to follow her almost all the way to City Hall. But anyway, I think she thought I was following her for sure, but, but I think we, as, as a city, however we can enforce our traffic laws, there's a crosswalk at the stop sign that she blew. So, so it's, I mean, it's a big deal. One area that I think is of particular interest in this report is the crosswalk. How often does a car stop at the far end, in other words, all the way through the crosswalk? They haven't stopped back of the crosswalk. They've encroached completely into it before they've stopped. And so I think there needs to be some education there, because the crosswalk is something that, whether there are pedestrians in it or not, it has to be respected in order for drivers to get in the habit. So, so that's something that, that, from an enforcement standpoint, I think that it really ought to be taken seriously, in order for this to work.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
A couple of my colleagues have already mentioned this. I think our feelings are uniform. It's a wonderful piece of work. Ms. Kunal, thanks to you for your guidance. And seventeen terrific folks from a combination of the City Transportation Commission, Bike Edina, Public Schools, Bloomington Public Health, a great combination of folks that helped do this work. So I think we'll be looking at some of these short-term improvements that Member Bennett talked about, and we look forward to the next round of activity. I'm assuming that all these, these City of Edina improvements are going through the system now, on page three of the executive report. There's about fourteen suggested sidewalk improvements there, and I'm assuming they're being vetted by the Living Streets Committee, would move on to the Edina Transportation Commission, and on to us with some sort of policy recommendation.
And those are all segments that are currently in the city's sidewalk plan, so some of them may be more immediate than others, but...
Is somebody prioritizing them and creating a hierarchy?
Yeah, with the PACS, Mayor, with the PACS funding source of last year, Mark Nolan's prioritized a lot of those sidewalks. These, some of these are in those for the next two or three years, some are not, because we know, maybe in five years, we're doing 58th Street, so why jump ahead if we know we're coming, surely?
Sure.
But they're all on the radar.
All right, good. Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Kunal.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a native son with us this evening for a sketch plan review. Mathias Mortensen, come on up, Mathias. Well, Carrie, you want to go ahead and introduce the topic? Yeah, as usual. I got a little bit enthusiastic about hearing from Mathias. So you'll, when he, when he comes up, you'll know that he left for a while, went out, left the Twin Cities, and then came back to work in the family business. So grew up in Edina, dad still lives over on Minnehaha Boulevard, and we're happy to have you here tonight. Director Teague.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before you is a sketch plan review, where the council is asked to make non-binding comments on a anticipated application. This project is located up in the 50th and France area. To acclimate you to the site, we have France Avenue that runs north-south here, 49th Street is located here. This is the north parking ramp in the 50th and France area. This is the old Edina Realty Building, the city recently acquired, so the site is just north of that site. To quickly show you the zoning, the area that are highlighted in red here, this is the commercial district, the commercial properties in the 50th and France area. There's a multifamily four-story apartment immediately to the east, it's this blue speckled area. And the properties that are highlighted with the, with the hatching here, those are duplexes, properties that are zoned R2. And the blank properties, those are single-family homes. In Edina, unlike a lot of cities, in our R2 zoning districts, single-family homes are not allowed, so a single-family home holds that R1 zoning. So the site that we're looking at this evening, there exists a two-story, single-family home. It's a rendering of what the home looks like today. You can see the apartment complex to the east, and the row of duplexes that are single-story to the west.
Yeah.
What the applicant would like to do is tear down that single-family home and put a duplex on the site, and I'll let him go through that in a little bit more detail. But you can see there, the proposal is to have two driveway accesses off of 49th Street. That was an issue that the Planning Commission raised as part of their review. Most of these duplexes just have a single entry into the site. This is a look at the rear of the home with solar panels on the roof. Couple more renderings. So the request would require a rezoning of this property from its current zoning of R1 to R2, and in doing that, there would be three variances that would be required, or requested, along with that. A building coverage, 25% is the standard, the proposed plans would be 30%. Minimum lot width for a duplex is 90 feet, the site is 65 feet, and the minimum lot area for a duplex is 15,000 square feet, and this site is just under 9,000 square feet. Just for a little perspective, most of these existing R2 or duplexes on this lot are non-conforming today. Some of them have 90 feet in width, some don't, but most all of them are not 15,000 square feet in size. Most of these properties are under our standard. So it is a neighborhood of non-conformities. So with that, I can stand for questions, or Mr. Mortensen is here to make a presentation.
Questions for Director Teague at this point in time? I don't think so. All right. Mr. Mortensen, welcome, and give us your name and address as you come up.
Mathias Mortensen. I'm not working on this project. I live...
I live at 2429 Sheridan Avenue in Minneapolis. Okay, thanks. So, just at the start, I wanted to say a little bit about the impetus for the project. My clients live in the neighborhood right now, within walking distance of 50th and France. And they're older, they're aging, they now, they, they still live in the house they've lived in for a long time. But it's just the two of them, and the house is too big, it's cumbersome. But they want to stay in the neighborhood. So, they purchased this property with the idea of developing this double-dwelling unit that would allow them to, you know, age in place within walking distance of this community that they, you know, really grown attached to. So, that's kind of the personal side. Then on the city or civic side, as Carrie mentioned, the, the existing block is primarily double-dwelling units. And when you, when you look at that map, the, the property in question is kind of like a missing tooth in a smile. It's kind of a gap. And I, I think just looking at the map, it, it, it kind of makes sense that, that would follow the pattern of the block as double-dwelling units. But more than just kind of that logic, this property is particularly unique because not only does it border the commercial district, directly border it, but it also borders this apartment, this high-density apartment unit. And then furthermore, we didn't know this at the time, but one of the commercial properties that adjoins this property is the Edina Realty, formerly Edina Realty property, which I think is most likely going to become an extension of the parking ramp. So, it's kind of surrounded, in a way, by sort of more commercial or denser properties. And I think for that reason, it also makes sense to be a double-dwelling unit. And then beyond that, I think this, this rezoning would help kind of establish this street, better establish it as a buffer between, between the commercial district and the more conventional Edina, single-family neighborhoods that are to the north of the block. And then I, I think, I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. And I've seen it develop from back when there, there was no multifamily into what it, what it is now, which is a really smart area that has walkable amenities. It has every amenity you could need, and it's surrounded by this ring of higher-density dwellings and then kind of an outer ring of lower density. And I, I think that this project would kind of help complete that picture as well. So, that's kind of the, the sort of civic side of what we're trying to do. And then I, I wanted to talk a little bit about the project itself. I, I think you all have renderings. So, kind of back to, you know, what the purpose of this project was, to create, to, to provide a dwelling for an aging couple. And that means that everything, everything can be reached without having to walk up steps. So, the, the floor plan, although it's not represented in what you have, provides for washer, dryer, kitchen, dining room, master bath, and bedroom, all on the first floor. That was a very important aspect to the project. There is also a second floor with additional bedrooms. So, so that's kind of the aging and, aging in place aspect to it. It was also really important to, to build something sustainable that was environmentally friendly. And that's why we, we made the decision to put solar panels on an entire south-facing gable of the house. But we're also doing some other things. Advanced framing techniques will help reduce material consumption and will increase the overall efficiency of the building. We're limiting impervious surfaces, both with the parking strategy and with the kind of hardscaping pavements we're going to select. And then we're doing some of the more traditional things. High-efficiency fix, water fixtures and appliances and triple-glazed, north-facing windows and things of that nature. And then, something else that's been important is a dwelling that is, you know, part of the neighborhood, that's neighborhoodly. And that's, that's something that's, it's hard to find all these things together in, in one house. And that's, that's something we're trying to do. So, just looking at that front rendering, the, the form is such that it presents a, a lower scale than, than you would have, for instance, if that gable was rotated and you saw the peak of the house right up there at the front. It, it's presenting just one single entry to the street. So, it doesn't really appear as, as a double-dwelling unit. And it kind of makes it seem a little bit more, a little bit smaller, I guess I'd say.
Would you like the drawings off of my copy so that you could display them? Or are they on the computer?
Yeah, when I was presenting, there we go, to the planning commission, I was...
All right.
Yeah, so I can, I don't know if you can see the screen though, so...
We can.
But it doesn't, you can, okay.
We've got our own screens here.
Oh, you do, okay. I was curious about that. Am I going in the wrong direction? Okay. Oh, okay. It doesn't look like the, yeah. That's all right. Oh, okay. Thanks. So, yeah, I was pointing out the, the entry. And then, although we haven't really developed the landscaping to the same extent as other aspects of the project, the intent was to, to soften the adjacency to the apartment unit with some trees and plantings. And, and also to, and you can kind of see, see it happening, but it hasn't been fully developed to, to kind of create a soft, softer approach to the, to the house. And the house, I should point out, the, the property has kind of a hill to it. And the existing house is sitting on top of that hill. And this house would also sit on top of that hill. So, there is an incline up to that, that entry. And that's kind of what I mean by trying to sort of soften and ease that approach. So, I can certainly answer more questions about that, but I didn't want to take too long. The last thing I wanted to say was that we were seeking this rezoning. I think it makes sense for some reasons already stated. But that, that rezoning makes it non-conforming, and that kind of triggers the, the need for these variances. But as Carrie pointed out, the other double-dwelling units on this street, it's kind of an unusual street in the city. The, the other double-dwelling units are non-conforming. So, really what we're, you know, hoping for is just an opportunity to do something similar as, as has been done on other properties of that street. And then, that's, that's it. I'll, I'll take questions.
Right. Member Swenson, or Member Bennett, you go ahead, and Member Swenson will go next.
I have a question for Director Teague and a question for you. Director Teague, there's reference to lot coverage. And we know from discussions that we've held in the last year that not every lot under 9,000 square feet gets 30% because of that decline that starts over 7,500 square feet, where it starts to taper back, ending at 25% at 9,000 square feet. And this one's closer to that 9,000 square feet. Do we know what the lot coverage would be allowable if it were to remain R1?
I can look it up quickly. I can have that answer for you.
Okay, it would just help, I think, to, to add a little bit of perspective. And then, Mr. Mortensen, another question of perspective. You refer in your, or the, the documents in your statement refer to the possibility of parking lot to the south. But should it not be parking lot? There actually is zoning and comp plan for four stories.
Yes.
And you are aware of that?
I am aware of that, and I've done some solar studies just to, just ensure that if it was, if that lot was developed to its maximum height, that it wouldn't impact the, the solar panel approach. And, and it won't. So, that, so that's, you know, a positive. But it will cast a lot of shadows on the rear yard. And that's just, you know, an unfortunate repercussion, I guess. But we are aware.
And why the two, why the two driveways? Did you give any consideration to configuring the garages in such a sense? Understanding that you want elevators and, and I understand the kind of security issues. But did you think about trying to configure the garages in such a way that possibly you would turn them and maybe not have them line up with the walls above, but still have those private garages? And then, and, but only require one driveway, one curb cut, all the impervious surface that that would bring in?
We, so we have looked at a number of different parking options. And I, I think it, it is possible to, and this was something I've been looking at since the planning commission, which raised some of the same concerns. Possibility of doing away with one of those. And I still, I still need to go through some iterations to make sure that the, the radius, you know, the, the turning radiuses would all be able to be accommodated within the underground parking area. Because the, the difficult, the, what, what the two driveway plan allows for is being able to pull in and park and reverse out and pull, you know. So, I've been looking at it. I'm trying, I'm trying to get it there so that I, I think that legitimate concern can be addressed. But I, not, not quite confident yet that I can do it.
Did I hear correctly or read correctly that the height of the retaining wall could rise to as much as nine and a half feet?
Well, so, yeah, that, that would be the, the maximum at the very back end of that driveway. But it's not, it's not that it's rising because that driveway is cutting down into the, into the slope. Part of the rationale behind the parking plan was that, you know, there is this hill on the site. And that actually allows for this opportunity to just hide the garage, hide the parking, and get it underneath by digging that driveway down a little bit. So, I mean, really, what, what would be presented to the street would be something sim, similar to a retaining wall that rises four feet. And the other portion of the retaining wall is actually going down into the ground. But, you know, the overall, that overall height obviously has to be high enough to allow a car to go under it. So, that's, that's kind of why it is the way it is.
And from a safety perspective, because people don't always stay on the side, your children run...
Yes, right. And that's, yeah, that's, and that's a building code issue, protecting the health and welfare of the public and the people who live here. Obviously, that would be addressed. And the, the intention, and again, this goes back to the landscaping needing to be developed. But when I, when I mentioned providing landscaping, that kind of eased and softened the aspects like that. That would be part of the purpose of, of that landscaping along that retaining wall. That would be, you know, equivalent to a guardrail or fence.
Given the, given the sort of functional issues, stormwater management, infiltration potential, given the height of the retaining wall, understanding that there's a decline that will furnish part of that height, and given impact not only on the viewer from the street, the homes across the street, but also homes, understanding there's a apartment building adjacent, but one side, it's a R2 dwelling, double-dwelling. And so, keeping all of those factors in mind, I would rather see you try to combine those driveways into the single driveway with the tuck under than two and essentially have it almost appear to be a three- or four-story house from the street and, and have that potential loss of view and whatever with the side as well.
And I, you know, we, I want to, I want to avoid what you're describing. You know, I, I've seen other developments in the area that had, you know, that have perched themselves up too high, in my point of view. I'm definitely, you know, aware of that concern, and I don't want this house to be that kind of house. So, I mean, I, I intend to do my darndest to, you know, to address that, that issue.
Member Swenson.
The design is intriguing. It feels really like it's a design that's beautiful, but on too tight a space. I also am not comfortable with too deep driveway cuts. It's unlike anything else. Where you said you wanted to design and put something that's similar to all the houses. The only similar thing this has to the other houses is that it's a side-by-side house. It's taller, it's bigger, it takes up way more of the lot than anything on that street. So, I'm not opposed to having a double-dwelling necessarily on this street. I'm a little opposed to this particular plan as it's presented today on that lot. So, I have an issue with the driveways, having two of them. I have an issue with lot coverage. There's a fair amount of hardscape on this because of a number of things that you've done. And granted, we don't count them in lot coverage, you know, your sidewalks and everything like that. But you have multiple steps, you have the ramp, you have all this hard cover around it. I understand that's for getting, being able to get around should someone be in a wheelchair or something like that or on a, with a walker or something. But what I see is really tight with a lot of concrete spaces. Permeable or not, I'm not sure, but, but that's, my view of it is that. It is nothing against your architecture. You've done a really intriguing idea of putting in these two dwellings and making it look like one, and then dividing them in back. And, you know, a lot of things that you've done are architecturally are really nice. Just for me, it just feels really overbuilt on the size of lot. Not that a different lot that was a little bit bigger wouldn't handle it just fine. But, and the other thing is, you have the advantage of being on a hill. But you're really one of the few. The hill then changes as it goes from you. So, where, you know, you're trying to fit into the neighborhood, just being on top of that hill and being a house that's much taller and bigger than anything else isn't going to fit into the neighborhood.
So, just a couple points about, about that. And the, the concern about the driveways and the retaining walls, I, I understand. And I think that's a good point about the fact that, you know, it is on a hill and those, the double driveways make it, you know, different than other properties.
Well, it creates an island.
Yeah. But as far as impervious surface goes, because that was an issue raised when I presented in front of the planning commission, I did go back and I did a study of impervious surface in, with the existing single-family house as compared to what's proposed here. And a study of impervious surface if we were to do a more standard driveway to a rear accessory structure. And I did find that even after taking into account the, the sidewalk and the steps, that it was still less than either the, either that exists, either the existing condition or that other condition. But that's not, you know, that's not to say that, that alleviates all the concerns. I, I know that it doesn't, so... But just as far as impervious surface goes, I do know that this is actually providing less surface than a, than the more sort of conventional approach to parking on the street, as well as what's there existing. But, you know, having said that, I understand, you know, there are other things that I need to be looking at.
Well, especially if your building would be having a 30% lot coverage versus a 25% lot. Thank you.
Member Brendel.
Thank you. I actually really like it. The double driveway doesn't bother me at all. This is not a busy street, it's a very quiet street. Some of the other double homes have a lot more hardscape on their pieces of property than this one does. So I, I think you've done, for a 66-foot wide frontage, I think you've done an amazing job of maximizing the top of the hill and using the height that you've got to get the garage underneath. Now that said, as I look at the street view looking southwest, which is what you have on there. So the, the grade, as we're looking at here, is what the existing grade is right now, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And so then I've got my driveway on this side, I've got an identical driveway entrance on the other side. These are, these are two separate dwelling units. I see no reason to combine the driveway. I understand, totally understand the, the thinking. But, but if, if I'm one of the residents and I routinely have a similar schedule as my neighbor, I might find myself wanting to do things at a totally different time. And, and just to make sure I can get in and out safely. So for me, I think it is ideal. Now, as I'm looking at this view, and we'll go to another one in a minute, I see a bit of the retaining wall standing up above the lawn, which is good because that will help people know where there is a drop-off and to avoid it. And your landscaping is going to help all that even much more than that. Then, okay. So from this view, is this one home? Is this one entrance on this end and the other? So this is two entrances here?
Two entrances. So if you, if you go to the front elevation, you can see that there are two doors with a divider between them.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. So it is that.
Yeah.
It is actually very cool. I would love to live here. Okay, looking at, looking northeast. Let's go to the looking northeast, which is the one with the solar panels. All right. So the house is at grade, and then there's kind of a ramp built down to the lower level?
Yes.
Is this to get light in the lower level, or what, what are you doing here?
So the front half of the lower level is parking, and then the rear half, or, you know, slightly less than the rear half is finished, would be finished space.
Okay.
That could be, that could serve a variety of purposes, just as a regular bedroom or as an, for in-home care. And then, so that obviously necessitates the need, being on a hill, for there to be light and egress possibilities from there. So that's, that's what that is meant to do, but in a way that isn't, is something better than just, you know, a window well or a pit.
Okay. Now, these two cars that are sitting here, where are they? Are they on this property?
They are on the adjacent property. So the apartment unit.
That's the apartment building next door?
Yeah. They have underground parking, but they also have a surface-level parking lot that's directly adjacent.
Okay.
That is, I think it's for guest parking.
All right. Well, what is on this street, I mean, the different architecture, old and new on this street. It's very, very eclectic. So putting something that's different and contemporary and striking in here, I think would be, would be really cool. The single-family home that is there?
Yeah.
Is there any thought to lifting it and moving it and selling it?
That has not been considered, actually.
Well, it is very cute.
Yeah.
It is actually one of my favorites around. And, and it's very cute. And that would kind of lessen the, I guess, environmental impact of a tear-down, if you will. But if it's in a condition that could allow it to be lifted and, and sold, I know that there are people who do that, so. And they're successful at selling their homes. And it's a bit of revenue for the, for the homeowner.
Right.
Um, and great. Stormwater. How are you managing stormwater with that driveway that goes down? How are you managing that?
There would be a trench drain with a pump to the, to the city sewer system.
Okay. All right. And then as far as the stormwater coming off the roof, where does that go?
So part, if you're looking at the south view, the view looking northeast, you can see kind of a strip that's separating the two units, as well as just the actual space separating the two units. That is all intended to be planting, and the rainwater would be funneled into that. And it would serve as, you know, a way to absorb as much of it as possible and to filter it and just let it drain back to the existing, what is essentially the existing grade. But, you know, again, that's kind, that's, that's the intent, and it needs to get developed. But for sure, everything that the roof is shedding would end up getting absorbed. That's the intent.
Okay.
Would get, end up getting absorbed by grade.
Yeah. This is a big roof.
Yeah.
And it's an enormous amount of water that then gets shed off of it. It's amazing how much. So, so we would love to have you manage that on the property rather than put it into the storm drain system.
Right. Maybe, maybe it's enough volume to require rain barrels. You know, I would say whatever it takes is what we plan on doing.
All right. Let's see here. Looking at my notes. And back here, there's a bit of a schematic about how the, how the building fits on the property. So outside the retaining walls, I was talking with one of the people in planning today confirming. So outside the retaining wall, you've got a three-foot setback from your property line to your retaining wall. How much, how far are the retaining walls setback from your property line?
The retaining walls in the front?
On the sides.
On the sides. They're, they're setback, well, so the, let me. So that retaining wall that you see in this view looking southwest, that retaining wall is setback 10 feet. So in line with.
Okay. Is there a retaining wall on both sides of the driveway?
Yes. There, so on this, on the, on the east side, there would be. And then on the, on the west side.
She wants to know what your setback is from your side lot line to your retaining wall on the east side there.
There essentially is no setback.
So they built that retaining wall along the property line?
Yeah.
I think is the answer, Mary, that you were looking for. Does that make sense?
And that would require a variance, a three-foot setback is required.
Yep. So that would be an additional variance.
It would.
The concern on that, Mathias, is this. And we've seen it in homes that were built in 1910. And we've seen it in homes that were built in 2013, 14. And that is, if you want to walk from your front yard to your backyard, you have to go on your neighbor's property to do so, or you have to walk through your house.
Right.
And so, might want to, I don't know. I mean, you have only 66 feet here.
Well, so I guess I'd say two things. One is, that concern would not be relevant here because there is a way, just in terms of how the building lays out.
Oh, there is a walkway. Yep, 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 yep.
And then secondly, if a driveway, if, you know, if we can pull it off and we get rid of a driveway, it'll be the one adjoining the apartment unit. And that's, the whole landscape is kind of sliding off to the west.
Okay.
And by the time you get to the western edge of the property, you know, I don't know, I don't know for sure if we get there, but it's, it's pretty much at the, that driveway is, you know, it's going to be dipping down a little bit under the existing adjoining driveway. And I don't know if that still constitute, I assume that still constitute a retaining wall. But that would be the approach to get rid of that eastern driveway. And that, that, that western driveway is much more sort of in line with the existing adjoining grade.
Well, and then that would give you room to honor the setback.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Right.
All right. Okay. All right. Well, those are my thoughts. It is, it, I like it a lot. And you've got some work to do on it, but what you're going to end up with, I think, is going to be pretty, pretty special. Thank you.
Member Sprague.
Thank you. I'm all for the sustainable elements, but the house plan and the driveway situation, to me, does not meet the test of not altering the essential character of the neighborhood. You've got four gables and basically kind of a mirror image impact on the side. You've got two large retaining walls in the front. And then in the back, you have a yard carve-out with more retaining wall, and then kind of an odd little walkout area in the back. And none of that is consistent with what you would see on the block. I mean, it, that was my first impression when I looked at the plan. It doesn't, doesn't fit in. So I understand that you perceive there to be a hardship by your rezoning it to R2. But I think if you came forward with a different site plan, I would have a different perception of the essential character element. So I kind of echo what Councilmember Swenson has, has said. Some of the design elements don't seem in line with the neighborhood, and it has to do with the site plan itself.
Thank you.
Member Bennett?
Question for Director Teague. He has, he has the answer for us on lot coverage.
Okay.
Should this property remain R1, and if it was a tear-down rebuild, sorry? But the maximum coverage would be 25.5% that would be allowed on this site as it, as it, as it exists today.
Thank you.
All right. So you're going to leave here with kind of mixed messages. But, like Member Sprague, I like the sustainability elements a lot. For me, the architecture is a pleasant change from the beautiful sort of traditional architecture we've seen. You've heard from folks that you need to work on the driveway situation. I think you'll make an earnest effort on that based on what I've heard. The rezoning doesn't bother me, the variances don't bother me. I think this is a neighborhood where your immediate neighbor to the east is a four-story apartment building with, I don't know how many units it's got in it. But as you, as you move from east to west, I mean, it's, it's a dramatic improvement. So it's a decent-looking apartment building on 49th and France. Moving to what you're doing, even if you have to, you know, come back and say, I think I need this guest parking, and here's why, onto a series of patio homes, twin homes, as you move to the, to the west. And houses to the north are, for the most part, also elevated, as I recall.
That's right.
So some of these elements that you've talked about, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with. I don't feel that it alters the essential character of the, of the neighborhood. Because I think it's a dramatic improvement to the neighborhood, frankly. Maybe that is altering the essential character of the neighborhood. But with an apartment building to the east, and then this house, and then patio homes, I think it's, it's a good addition to that neighborhood. And you've seen what's happening further west with, with twin homes. Two twin homes that were built maybe six, eight years ago now, down about a block on the south side that I think sold for a million and a half dollars each. And then there's a new one across the street to the north. And so this is, what you're doing here is consistent with what's happening in that neighborhood in terms of people want to be close to 50th and France, and they want to be able to walk down there. And the elements of this property that these people are interested in having to help them age in place, I think you've done a pretty good job of that. So, you know, I think you probably do hear that majority of the council are concerned about this parking issue. And the Planning Commission, too. I think you'll solve this issue about safety using landscaping, or if necessary, some kind of railing system like you have sketched above the garage door opening. So I would be concerned about runoff, too, I think, as Member Brendel mentioned, on either side of the building. So, but you're working on some permeable surfaces and, and so figure out that drainage, too.
Member Bennett?
I just want to add that I asked about lot coverage because it did matter to me. And the answer is kind of what I thought of, which is that R1 or R2, you're pretty much around 25%. And I do think that the driveway is an issue and that hardscape and the problems it creates with drainage, which we're hearing about, and I know you're trying to address them. But when you say, I'm going to, you know, pipe it into the city system, we're going to be getting more and more pressure as a community to not be doing that. We are maxing out our stormwater facilities, our ponds. And it creates the need for a public subsidy to create more of those, plus we don't have the room for them. So this is a lot of house on a not-so-big lot. And I don't mind, I can support the consistency of R2 by R2 by R2 by R2, particularly in the setting. The density, the lot coverage, would bother me. So for me, it would not only be trying to fix the driveway issue, but I do concur with two of my colleagues in terms of the amount of building on this lot. And that's when I made the reference to it seeming almost like a four-story house. That is, I think, how it would feel on the sides as well as across the street.
So, because I wasn't sure what to expect in terms of the direction with the rezoning and variances, I have been working under this assumption that what made sense was not necessarily, you know, trying to maximize as much as I possibly could, but to cover the same amount of lot as other properties do on the street. And granted, this is one of the smaller properties, but the premise is that this makes sense as a double dwelling unit. And accordingly, a double dwelling unit is obviously going to take up more, more space on the lot than a single family. And I've just been aiming for, I guess, kind of an in-between, you know, an in-between between the, what, you know, the, the single-family footprint and the, and the maximum double-family footprint. Just something reasonable. And I understand, you know, it's a smaller lot, but I don't think this footprint is, all other things considered, an unreasonable footprint. And then the second aspect that I, I'd say is important is, in order for this to be an age-in-place... I, I'd say is important is, in order for this to be an age-in-place house, that, that footprint needs to be of a certain size to be able to accommodate all the functionality on one floor. So, those were kind of the things that were feeding this design.
The, the, a sketch plan review for us is just letting us respond to you. So...
That gives you an opportunity to see kind of how we see it. We appreciate your feedback on it. You just, you know, at this point, you just go back and try to decide what you want to do based on our feedback, and talk to Carrie, and, and move from there. So...
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinson.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Redevelopment?
Right. We've got the next matter in front of us is the proposed ordinance change to Chapter 10 regarding residential redevelopment enforcement.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, before you is an ordinance that makes some minor revisions to the, the ordinance that you adopted this past summer regarding residential redevelopment, putting the construction management plan essentially into code. So, these are recommendations that have been made by staff to clarify language and address some issues that we've been having over the past half-year in regard to tear-down rebuilds. So, just to quickly go through them, one of them is oftentimes we require a shoring plan, but it's not mentioned specifically in the code. So, that's been added to first soil stabilization. Made some clarifications in regard to number of calendar days, number of days in regard to written notification of the demolition, clarifying the hours of operation.
Mm-hmm.
Giving some police power to the residential redevelopment coordinator in regard to having the ability to issue tickets for parking. And then also addresses dampening construction sites, controlling dust essentially for a tear-down. So, with that, if the council is comfortable with the, with the language in front of you, you could waive second reading. If not, if you have some suggestions, we can bring it back as part of a second reading.
Member Brindl first.
Thanks, Carrie. I sent you an email earlier today with some wordsmithing. Oh, okay, okay. Well, let's look at them then. On page one, section two, sub three, soils investigation report, if you go down to the line that begins in yellow, "A shoring plan is necessary," comma, "the applicant." And then move forward, "Must provide a detailed plans." So, do you want it a detailed plan, or do you want it detailed plans? Which would you like there? Can't have it both ways.
Sorry, I'm having trouble finding that.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's in the seventh line on, under...
Would you read that again, Member Brindl?
Page one, if you go to section two, section 10-110, permit requirements, number three, soils investigation report. And you go down to the line starting in yellow.
If the building official...
"A shoring plan is necessary," comma, "the applicant, go forward, must provide a detailed plans." Or, is it, "The applicant must provide detailed plans"?
It's a plan.
A detailed plan.
Yeah.
A detailed plan. Okay. And then, all right, let's see.
So, it's just a singular, change the plural to singular.
Yeah, it is. I mean, it's, you know, and, and we, this is our chance to make a correction. Then the next one, number five, in the first line, we delineate calendar days. Does that mean all other days referred to in that paragraph are referred to as calendar days?
Yes, that would be the intent.
Okay. Then, the only other one I have, which also is wordsmithing, because I, I didn't find really anything to change in here, other than these two things. Section three, section 10, on page two, permit standards for both demolition permits and building permits, is where I am in B. The last sentence, Sundays and holidays, work is prohibited. And that's actually not a sentence. I know the intent, but that word-for-word isn't... So, you could say, "Work is prohibited on Saturdays and Sundays."
Sundays and holidays.
Sundays, sorry, yes. Sundays and holidays.
Or go to singular again. That would work, wouldn't it? Sunday and holiday work is prohibited?
Sunday and holiday work is prohibited. Yeah, that would make sense, if you didn't have the S's.
I like the affirmative better, Mayor. Work is prohibited on...
Work is prohibited on Sundays and holidays?
It's a stronger sentence.
Okay.
So, those are the things that, I think that's, let me see. Yep, that's all I had on that.
Good, thank you. Member Bennett?
Thank you. Member Brindl found what I found. And then on section 3A, I'm looking at the articles and looking at the code itself. It looks like there are other articles that would apply, for instance, the sheathing on a building. Why do we call out some but not all of the ones that are applicable?
That I can't answer. Off the top of my head, that's existing language.
Yes.
From the original ordinance.
If I could just, there are all sorts of things that apply that aren't listed here. The zoning ordinance, for example.
So, why do we list what we list? But we're not, we're not then excluding the applicability of the others?
It's to, I assume that...
Emphasis?
To bring attention to these specific items that might otherwise be overlooked.
Okay.
Legally, you don't need any of it.
Okay. So, it's emphasis or a reminder?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I would make a motion to move this item, including second reading.
I'll second it.
All right, I had a couple of other questions, if you don't mind. What I was wondering was whether, the building official, this is in section two, paragraph three, "If the building official determines a shoring plan is necessary, they must produce a detailed plan." It, it made me think about, what do you get in, what, what kind of resolution do you have, or mechanism do you have for resolving whether or not a shoring plan is actually necessary? I mean, is there some kind of an appeals process for the denied shoring plan, or is it just something that we're vesting, you know, power in the building official to make that unilateral decision?
I think our discussion at the pre-meeting was that we were vesting power in the building official.
Okay, well, thanks.
Mayor, are you saying, can they appeal that to the construction board of appeals?
Possibly.
They could.
They would. So, that's the mechanism.
Yeah, all right, good. All right. And then over on page three, under G, "Dust control is a responsibility of the permit holder. As weather permits, materials subject to demolition shall be thoroughly dampened with water so as to prevent dust." That seems like a pretty high standard, "so as to prevent dust." I mean, what, prevent any dust, all dust? You can't have any, you can't, you know, you're allowed no latitude there on a little bit of puff-up? So, what, am I reading too much into this?
Isn't thorough dampening the dust prevention method? I don't say, I don't say, it doesn't say you have to eliminate. It's just saying thoroughly to prevent.
It's, and it's standard practice right now in the building industry, Mayor, which you didn't have an opportunity to hear. And that this isn't something we would request at below zero when you really couldn't dampen it. We might ask them to wait and tear down the house when they're not 35 mile-an-hour winds in the winter, but windows aren't open in the winter. So, I think the goal was, was safety for everyone.
You were all satisfied with this.
I think so. I guess I'll let everyone else speak for themselves.
Well, it's materials subject to demolition, and actually, it would be a workplace safety issue for the people working on the site as well as for neighbors.
I understand what you're saying, Mayor. You're reading "prevent" as "eliminate." And really, I think it's not that strong when you have that thoroughly dampened as a modifier, because that's not a complete standard.
So, the word choices.
Right.
So, this is an ordinance, and, and we're giving the authority to the residential development coordinator to have police powers relative to parking requirements and regulations of this section. But this is an ordinance, not regulations, as I understand it. Regulations would be distinct from an ordinance. So, where are the regulations?
Within section...
Why don't we just say something, other than using the word regulations, why don't we say enforcing the parking requirements and other, other parts of this section or other parts of the, or all sections?
Are the parking requirements a regulation?
All sections of the ordinance, yeah.
Mayor, if you look back at page two, section three, which is section 10 hyphen 111D, lists a number, in text, in a paragraph, lists a number of parking regulations. And so, those, I believe, are the regulations that are being referred to.
Okay. So, despite the fact that it's embodied as a code section, as an ordinance, there are regulations embodied in the... I was just reading, that is all part of the ordinance.
Only thing that this person can do is enforce the parking requirements and the parking regulations in this section. Anything regulating parking.
Okay, then...
Okay, so why don't we put the parking, why don't we put the word parking in front of the word regulations, too? Or are people comfortable with the way it is ordered?
Well, I mean, you're, now you're making me look at this and think whether we're being redundant.
And just say, requirements.
Enforcing the park, parking regulations of this section, or parking requirements of this section. But...
Just say enforcing the requirements of this section. Is that what you're getting at?
Yep.
Aren't they called out as regulations? Are they called out as requirements?
They aren't called out as either.
Yeah, they are. Vehicles in violation of these requirements.
Where, where do you see that?
It's in 310.
I really don't think that's a material issue. I think it's...
I think it's pretty clear as it's...
I think it's fine.
All right. Okay, let's leave it the way it is. I just wanted to raise the issue with everybody. All right, so we got a motion and a second.
Mayor, can I ask a question on that, on that one section you were just, so is parking monitors defined, or is that a term of art?
I took, it's the term you use in your code right now.
Okay.
It's an ongoing term.
Define somewhere else.
With the different, different sections. Apparently, it is a defined term.
All right, we got a motion and a second. I think we had a motion embodying waiver of second reading with the changes that were made. And any further discussion? Ms. Mangan, you've got all the changes?
Yes, sir.
All right. Roll call, please.
Member Brindl.
Here, I...
Member Sprague.
Aye.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
All right. Next thing on the agenda is the resolution accepting various donations. Got a motion and a second on resolution 2014-18. Discussion?
So moved. I don't think, I think...
I thought, one of the two of you moved it.
I said, "They're big ones."
I did, too. I heard the same thing you did. I thought, boy, they were fast down there.
But I'll move it.
I'll second it.
And then maybe the two of you want to talk about how big they are. We got any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those say nay. Carrie, the two of you that are admiring the size of these donations, do one take one and one take the other?
I mean, seriously, the Icaola Cup golf tournament to the, to the Braemar area lobby picture frames, $5,500. I mean, that's huge.
And the USA Hockey Foundation has given $10,000 to remodel the coaches' resource room. And then Bob O'Connor has generously donated, donated books and videos for that coaches' resource room.
Good. Do you know, are the frames of the District One hockey players?
Yeah, is that what these, yes, that's what these frames are for the Division One boys and girls, men and women, hockey players from Edina High School.
Yep. So, the, for the Icaola Cup golf tournament, I'd like to thank Casey Hankinson and all of his crew for year after year having this great fundraising event to enhance Braemar Ice Arena. So, thanks to everybody. And then correspondence and petitions, anything other than what we have in the...
Nothing more than what we have from...
Okay. Aviation noise update, I've got a short one, but Member Bennett, do you want to?
Mayor, do you want to lead?
Yeah, I can. Mine's real short. I had a phone call from Jeff Hamel, the executive director of the MAC, about a week ago. And he said that we should see the report from the FAA within two weeks. And that was all he was able to tell me, but that it was imminent. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Member Bennett?
I, I attended the NOC, Noise Oversight Committee Public Input Meeting last Tuesday. It was a small turnout, given weather, but more of the NOC itself present than have seen at a number of meetings. And a number of folks from Sunfish Lake who were expressing a desire to see ARNAV implemented because they want, they want planes tracked over freeways in open areas. Mr. Nelson, John Nelson, staff at the MAC, explained that that doesn't suit every community, that the right-of-way over 62 is much narrower in some communities, and the impacts are different. But this fits with what Member Swenson and I also experienced in Seattle, which is depending on where you are in the country, as well as where you are in the Twin Cities area, your experience of these, of air noise, aviation noise, is different, and your conditions are different. And I think that's what we're all hoping for as we wait for the response from the FAA based on last year's action by the MAC, or 2012's action by the Metropolitan Airports Commission. We're hoping for something that ultimately suits this area and recognizes that conditions are very different to the south and to the east, and to the north and to the west. I've asked communications director and IT director Bennerott to put up a map that shows where the remote monitoring towers are located. People may know that there are sort of two ways that things are measured. One is noise contours, which is actually a formula, it's a logarithm, but that's what determines the eligibility for noise mitigation, which Member Swenson spoke about. We know that eligibility is actually going to be reducing. And the contours have been shrinking slightly as there have been changes in fleet mix. There's another way that noise is measured. It doesn't go to the noise contours, but it does go to a monthly and an annual monitoring, and that is by use of these remote monitoring towers. This map shows the location. There are 39 for the, for MSP, more than apparently for any other airport in the country. I think some of that is because of original placement plus later requests. I'd like to draw attention to the fact that there are only four of them located west of 35W, and one of them located near the border of Edina, tower number one. Manager Neal and Member Swenson and I have discussed the need for there to be baseline determination of what impact is being experienced by this community. We know that we have anecdotal reports, and we have more than that. We actually have some sound engineers living in the community who've been taking their own measurements in their own yards. However, for official purposes, this is what the Metropolitan Airports Commission, MSP, the Noise Oversight Committee, this is what they look at, is the results that are reported monthly from measurements taken at these towers. So, we are requesting the installation of three towers in this community, whether it's temporary or permanent. We'd like to get some baseline, again, going into possible change of navigational technique. We are asking that one be located in the northern, northeastern area of the city, that would also have the benefit of measuring noise in St. Louis Park, where we know that there is complaint arising as well. Then we would ask for a second tower to be installed around Highway 62. You'll notice that there are towers spanning 62 in both Minneapolis and in Richfield, but we know that there's an impact in this community. We can see it on the weekly reports of flight density. We can see it on the, um, weekly reports of flight density. And then the third tower, we would like to have in the southwestern portion of the community, which because of flight patterns that involve flight, um, departures to the west and then turns to the south and back to the east, we know they're getting a fairly consistent density of flights, regardless of which runways are being used and how things are being shifted. So those are the three. Manager Neil has begun, um, discussions with MAC staff about what process we need to follow. And I just wanted to assure people that members of this council are actually working on this every day, every week, every day. Um, Member Swenson and Manager Neil and I met and, um, in City Manager Intern Coyle and City Pla-, Assistant Planner Chris Acker met last week with Emily Trantor from the Noise Organization in Washington, DC. We are planning to meet when we're in Washington with our congressional representatives. And we are meeting with our representation on the Metropolitan Airports Commission. So we are trying to both be acquiring factual knowledge and also form relationships, understanding that this community is in it together and we're looking for a solution that fits, um, the entire area. And Member Swenson, do you have anything to add?
You've done a great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Manager Neil, anything on that issue?
I, I don't. I think Councilmember Bennett covered all of that very nicely.
Good. Uh, Mayor and Council comments, uh, Member Brindle.
All right. I think Mr. Sprague and I are going to tag team on a couple of things. So I'll start out. Um, today, and I saw Josh there, uh, attended the opening, uh, grand opening reception of the exhibit at the Edina Historical Center for the, celebrating the sixtieth anniversary or sixty years of the Edina Garden Council in our city. The Garden Council is a leadership body that, um, that holds together about a dozen, maybe fourteen garden clubs in the city. And, um, I don't know if folks are really aware of, of the dedication and the vast knowledge of this group of people. But when you go around Edina, the gardens at Fiftieth and Wooddale and in all the parks, at City Hall, at the Senior Center, at the Fire Department, at various, various parks and, and public spaces, these gardens show up in about the second week of May, maybe the third week of May, and, um, or, or early June, depending upon what spring is like. But it is the work of these hundreds of volunteers who right now are planting seeds and transplanting seedlings every day at the greenhouse in order to beautify our city. And I don't know, I mean, it was a long time ago that, that, um, we quantified the savings to the city. It's, it's tens of thousands of dollars and maybe more than that. Uh, if you consider what geranium costs and you look around the city or, or what any of these single plants costs, each has a cost. And so these are provided to the city at no charge at all. Um, and, uh, and so we have a deep debt of gratitude to all of the volunteers in the Edina Garden Clubs and the Garden Council for their leadership. And, um, so anyway, the, the display at the Historical Society will be up through the end of February. So if you want to have a little fun, looking around to see kind of the evolution of gardening in our city, you can stop over and see that. Oh, well, look at those nice pictures. Oh, the perspective is lovely.
Yeah, that was my camera, my phone, but...
Nineteen ninety-four is when the gazebo was built. That's the bottom photo is we had a tea on the dedication day. And so we decorated the gazebo before, uh, before we had, before the preservative was painted on it.
Who's that young lady down on the right with the microphone?
Oh, yes, well, that is me. None other than, uh, I was president of the Garden Council for three years. And this was my final year as president and this was my, my goal. And I told them, they asked me if I'd be president for a third year and I said, I will do it if we build a gazebo. And if, if I do it, we will build a gazebo. So that's what we did. It is ten-sided, which in itself is, um, if you've ever tried to take out a protractor and draw a ten-sided circle. Um, so it is, it is beautiful. Um, and the view around and throughout Arneson Acres Park is lovely. And, uh, and this, um, this is kind of a crowning jewel of that area. Um, people take their pictures by this all the time, whether it's for graduation or prom or homecoming or sweethearts in the middle of winter or a wedding. Uh, there's a lot going on around that gazebo. It's a lovely building.
It's a beautiful decagon.
It, it is a beautiful decagon. Um, the only other thing I have has to do with, uh, Community Action Partnership of Suburban Hennepin, on which I am a board member. I have reapplied to serve another year. And at our recent meeting, some grant funds were talked about and CAPSH is not going to put itself in the running for these. But for instance, um, grant and loans to support public and private projects to support the creation of walkable communities, that a mix of uses and densities that support transit use. And, um, not very well stated, but that's what it is. And there's two point two million dollars away, available for transit-oriented development. Then affordable housing incentive fund. I think we need anything we can get to incent affordable housing in Edina. There's a two point seven million dollar grant. Uh, it's actually a loan for capital financing to create or preserve long-term affordable housing units throughout Hennepin County. And we could, we could, uh, whittle away at our, at our goals, um, to, to have, to attain, per the comprehensive plan. And then Home Investment Partnership Program, one point five million. These are regulated grants and loans to create or preserve long-term affordable housing units for very low and low-income families and individuals, homeless individuals and persons with special needs. I know that there is, uh, interest in finding, uh, a location for a site to provide housing to homeless youth. And, um, if, this is a pretty short term. Do I have the, yes, deadline is February twenty-seventh. Um, but if, if the city is going to participate in any way in, um, in being able to locate and incent an organization to locate housing for homeless youth here, um, this is some funding that could help us do it. So I do, in my, in my bag, have, have the, matter of fact, it's right here. Here's the email that I was handed about that. So, uh, while CAPSH didn't, uh, didn't jump on it, I said, I want that. So he printed that out for me. So thank you very much. That's what I have. And then we'll continue on with what Josh has.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
Um, question about the bike, bike on sidewalk ordinance. Uh, do I, do we need a motion to possibly refer to the ETC for a recommendation? What?
So moved.
I thought that was their work plan, that they were going to come back to us with it.
I don't know.
I'm looking over at the work plan queen, so could you look it up? And then we'll, we'll see if we need one. And then if we do, we can come back to it.
Okay.
She is the work plan queen.
Poor kid.
That's a compliment.
Yeah, that's a compliment.
It's in the work plan?
It's a formal title.
Oh, okay, I thought, I thought that was a cheer. Um, moving on to possibly moving back, um, I have been appointed to the National League of Cities First Tier Suburbs Council, um, representing cities and towns outside of central cities and inside the ring of developing suburbs and rural areas. These communities share unique challenges and strengths that should be included in national, state, and regional policy discussions. And I will be meeting with the group, um, when we are in Washington, DC and twice, two other times this year. And I have been electronically brainstorming with Manager Neil and Manager Intern Coyle on issues for the discussion tomorrow morning, a telephone discussion. And if anyone has any topics they would like to propose for discussion, we have a short list, but if you have anything that you would like to, I'll make sure. And it does include infrastructure, shared services. Um, I, that question, I think about when you have different policies on different, uh, urban issues, um, how they get resolved, also the role of regional planning, uh, the balance between regional planning and local control, that's something that I've thought about. So if people, but if people have ideas, please send them to me by nine o'clock tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Member Swenson?
Our, I'm, I can provide an update on the ETC work plan. And I do not see it included in their two thousand fourteen work plan.
I think that since it's an issue that they have discussed before, I don't think that it should add much to their work plan. And I, I think that they've looked before at what other cities do.
I think we need to specifically say it.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Posse say nay. Carrie? And Member Swenson?
I'm passing to...
Member Sprague?
I'm trying to set up some pictures here, so you want to say anything?
No.
Okay, um, well, a couple of things. Um, one, uh, I enjoyed seeing the presentation today for the garden club. I happen to be a, a primary beneficiary living across the street on Seventieth. And, um, I, I too, like you, just appreciate their Herculean efforts with all these different gardens. And they do beautiful work. Um, that, that, um, garden down there, uh, at Arneson Acres is like an open secret. You might drive by and never even know it's there, but when you go into it, it's just, it's amazing. Um, oh, here's some pictures I wanted to show you. So I told the ladies today, I have pictures with Charlie, my oldest, at, at the park. There's one great one. Here's another one by the fountain. Yeah. I have a lot of great pictures from, um, yeah, oh wait, I gotta send... This is, this is a great one, because this gets the, uh, the fountain. And the fountain was, that was two thousand six, was when it was dedicated? Is that right, Mayor?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Um, and it's a triple lotus. Um, and it's just a, if you, no one out there has ever seen it, you must check it out, because it's really quite beautiful. So anyway, during the discussions, um, I, uh, talked to Bob Coteen. He wanted to, uh, talk about watershed grants and making sure that when we're doing projects like the Dome, that we're making application to leverage the grant funding that's out there. Um, so I don't, you know, before we get to, I know we're on a fast track with that project with engineering, but, um, we should make sure we're leveraging those grants with both watershed districts. Here's one more picture. Yeah. Strapping young man. He's seven now. Um, the other thing is, uh, I want to, uh, make a motion to reconsider the approval of the Fifty-Fourth Street Project.
I'll second that.
All right, discussion? On the reopening?
And he can make that motion because you were on the prevailing side.
Correct, and I can second it because I was on the prevailing side.
All right. All those in favor say, discussion? First, motion, we got a motion in a second to just reopen it to discuss potential modification of the plan that we approved. Having said that, uh, any comment, any discussion? All those in favor of, uh...
Let's see what, there's a sidebar with the city attorney.
No. We haven't ordered, we haven't ordered the project yet for this.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we ordered the creation of bid documents and getting bids from contractors. But we haven't come back and awarded.
Awarded.
But we've ordered the project. It was at a public improvement hearing December tenth.
So the design.
Would cost money.
Yeah, you have to amend, you have to amend the proposal.
Let's talk it.
You certainly can reconsider and talk about anything you want. My concern is if, if you change what you're going to do, then you... I want to think about that. You might need another public hearing.
If it doesn't increase the cost of the project or increase assessments, then does it require a reopening of the public hearing?
There's a slim amount of case law on it. And I would like to take a look at that. You certainly can discuss anything you want tonight. But I just, if you wouldn't mind, I'd table, maybe not take formal action on it tonight, but put it on your next agenda.
I'll withdraw the motion then for now. Um, we were going to make a technical adjustment, so, and I'll, and then we'll, we'll reconsider it another time. So it's done lawfully.
Well, you, you, I don't know what the adjustment is, maybe if you wanted to...
You want to?
Let's have a discussion.
Okay, so I will remake my motion to reconsider.
So get your second out there, so...
Yep.
Any further discussion? We'll have a conversation about what, uh, Member Sprague has in mind. All right, uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Posse say nay. Carrie?
So one thing, um, that I wanted to follow up on was the size of the parking lanes with the advisory lane, um, design in the east section. And my initial thought was that we could not narrow the parking lanes without negatively impacting the traveling public. And after, um, some discussion with the city engineer, I'm told that we can narrow the parking lanes from eight to seven without any negative impact on the traveling public. And so therefore, my idea was to, um, narrow the two parking lanes from eight to seven and potentially allocate that space to a three-foot grass boulevard in lieu of the approved one-foot aggregate in the eastern section.
That would be seven-foot parking lanes on both the north and the south sides of the street.
Correct.
East of, east of, uh, Creek.
That's correct.
To France Avenue. So that's, uh, that's the scope of it, Roger. Can we reduce the...
I think, since you could really do that by change order after the project was ordered, you constantly make, not constantly, you make, regularly make change orders in projects. It's not uncommon. I think you can do that.
The right-of-way doesn't change. Um, it's just...
Assessments don't change their cost. But that's fine, I'm fine with that.
I think there may be, I, I support that in support of the narrow parking lanes to begin with, but it's my understanding that we cannot apply for two variances. If someone knows that we can, but I've been told that we can't.
Well, let's look at that issue in the, in the interim period here too until we, we, we're not planning on doing a change order tonight. I didn't take it. Or were we?
Well, I don't know. That was, our discussion was...
Well, let's go back to this question that Member Bennett raised.
Yeah.
Member Bennett, to answer your question, um, if we get approval from FHWA for the...
Advisory bike lanes.
For the advisory bike lane markings and the state aid for the variance on the lane width, we don't need any other approvals to go from eight to seven feet?
It was, so we don't need to get a variance from the state for the advisory bike lanes? Because that was in front of us last meeting. I mean, we tabled a pending clarification from FWHA. Or FHWA?
No, we need two, we need two approvals. So we first need state aid just for the lane width variance.
Okay.
We need approval from FHWA to continue the use of the pavement markings for the advisory bike lanes.
Yes.
So if we get that approval, that's the buffer that we can go from eight feet to seven feet with no variance from state aid. No variance. So...
Okay.
It's strictly an engineer decision or council action.
Okay, great, thank you.
And Roger, did I hear you say that we could take action tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, then.
So the three-foot buffer would be on each side of the street?
So again, what we're doing is, we're taking the two feet, combining that extra right-of-way with the one-foot aggregate and then making that all into a three-foot grass buffer.
Before the...
So it goes, it goes sidewalk, five-foot sidewalk, three-foot buffer.
I think, yeah, I think based on the conversation we had, you asked, uh, Director Milner to come up with a cross-section.
And this, this cross-section shows the, the savings on the parking lane, but it doesn't show where that additional two feet is applied.
This is the one that was approved on December tenth. And this one just shows reducing the parking to seven feet each way. So what I'm hearing is we could make this piece... So what I'm hearing is we could make this piece three feet, so we have a three-foot buffer, this curb would move over two feet, and we'd have seven and seven.
Yep.
So that's what I'm hearing.
So it actually gives less aggregate on the road, so.
With a five-foot sidewalk instead of a six-foot.
And it's a five-foot sidewalk with three feet, so that there's room for the snowplow to be able to plow snow.
My, my only concern, and we should talk this through and think about, if you are parking on the north side of Fifty-Fourth, across the street from the church, are you getting out of that car on the passenger side into a snowbank, or are you getting out of that car into a place, space where you can step out?
You, if you walk most of the sidewalks, any dina that are right next to the curb, they are not flat and open to the curb. There is a one to two mound of snow there. I've walked them all in our neighborhood, both three-foot and right next to the curb.
So either way, there's snow right next to the curb?
Either way, there's snow there, either way, they're going to have to wait, let the person out, and then pull it.
No change from what there is now.
Well, also, it was very important to the church, we saw in correspondence, and we heard, that the sidewalk on the south side of the street in front of the curb be a curb sidewalk.
Because they maintain that.
Right, and that is what it will be, and so people do have a choice in terms of where they pull up. People have a choice in terms of where they park when the parking isn't full on both sides of the street, and we understand that it's really only on Sundays that it fills on the north. And then, as Member Swenson points out, people have that choice that they make all over town to let someone out before they pull close to the curb.
Yeah, well, I think, and I think ECLC has advised that the seven-foot parking lanes are satisfactory. At least, the head pastor is, I think I got an email from him, maybe a copy of an email to somebody else, maybe to you, Member Sprague, but that was my understanding, was that.
This is a major design change order for you?
No.
Okay.
Not at all. That's, the south curb line would stay where it is, and we just shift that north curb line to the south.
But it is something we should really come to a resolution on, so that documents and.
Well, that's why I thought, really, if Roger feels comfortable with us voting on it tonight, I would rather vote on it tonight since we have requests and other things than to put it off.
Yeah, and we'll be coming back to you next meeting for that resolution, we've got more data on the advisory bike lanes.
Great, thank you.
If it waited till that one, it would, would be huge, because we got to come back for that one.
If, if there's no worry doing it tonight, I would like to move that change.
I'll second it.
All right, discussion?
Yeah.
Member Brindle?
Just a question. There has been a strong passionate request for two more feet to be removed from this, rather than removing, well, for two feet to be removed. And here, I'm not sure that we've actually removed any feet, we've just reconfigured to make a narrower parking lane and a wider boulevard between the street and the sidewalk.
And I have the house just to the west of this, where you are referring to the passionate request, that wants the boulevard for the sidewalk.
Oh yes, very much wants the boulevard for the sidewalk, totally understand that, and I like the boulevard for the sidewalk. Is it possible to narrow anything beyond what we have here?
Not with the advisory bike lanes.
Okay.
I also think, I've been looking at this a lot, this, that three-foot of snow is, it really creates a way safer haven, and I just think, you know, as we talked about down on Forty, in Morningside, the sidewalk we put in.
Forty Second.
Forty Second Street, when we put it in as a boulevard, a lot of that, that was important to us in that conversation was, for the large part of the year when we're snowplowing, to make it safe, but also for the other part when you're walking it, and it's just green, to make it safe. Personally, I, I think it's really important that we do the best job we can where we put in sidewalks.
Quality facilities, and that's what we did on Burnham, too, by the new development. We asked, we intentionally asked for more boulevard. I think we did a three-foot.
More questions, Member Brindle?
No, no, I, I'm, I'm fine, I just, I just want to get to a place where, where we are listening to the people who are calling and saying, but wait a minute, before you do this, can't we consider this? So I just want to make sure that we've considered everything. No, I'm fine. I, I have another question, but I'll ask it after the vote.
All right. So we've got a, we have a, we have a motion, Members Sprague?
Yep.
And we've got a second to create seven-foot parking lanes on each side of Fifty-Fourth Street, east of Minnehaw Creek, all the way to France Avenue, and create a three-foot buffer on the north side of the street with a five-foot sidewalk.
And by three-foot buffer, three-foot grass boulevard.
With a grass boulevard, not an aggregate boulevard.
Right.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Carrie?
The one point I do want to make on this is it does move the curb and the parked cars two feet away from the house you were referring to, Mayor.
Okay, great.
So remember that.
Okay, good, glad to hear it.
I'm not visualizing that, so I, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, well, this, this was a project that we worked on after midnight.
Oh, it is.
And it was exhausting.
It absolutely is. The questions I have relate to particularly how people are going to park when they go to church, because there's plenty of parking when there's not church. But fire hydrants and bus stops, Chad, do you have an idea where these things are going to be, and therefore where parking is not going to be allowed?
We don't have that put together yet, they're still working on the design for that. Typically, the hydrants go right back where they are today, and that's typically intersections, so you really can't park thirty feet from an intersection anyway. The bus stop locations, we're still working with Metro Transit to get that one hopefully located on the south side, just east of the creek, as close as we can, so we're still working with them on that.
That's where it is now, and there's no parking there now either, so.
All right, and then regarding bus stops, is there any information on the bus stops west of the creek in that section where there are, there's a bus stop each block currently? We were going to try and, try and reduce that to one each way?
Yep, we discussed that at the hearing, and we can reduce half of those, remove half, so I think we'll have one at Wooddale, and then the middle, Oakland.
Okay.
Second street over, so yep, we were able to reduce, get rid of half of them.
So they wouldn't do down to just two stops?
No, there'll be two stops.
One on each side?
There'll be two stops on the west side. Yep, there's four today, we're going down to two.
Oh, oh, excellent, 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 I thought there were more than that. Okay, excellent.
All right, that's all I got.
Good, back to Members Sprague, anything further?
No, just on sign placement again, when you have the curb, I'm sorry, when you have the sidewalk right on, at the curb, you have a limitation with your, with your signage. The boulevard gets you a place to put that, that's out of the walk shed, so to speak. Go ahead.
And out of the yard.
And out of the yard.
Out of the lawn, yeah.
Okay, good, thanks. Well, first of all, before I kind of report out on things that I've attended, last Thursday night, they had the public input meeting at Braemar on golf operations in Edina, and I really kind of stumbled into something there that I didn't intend to do. I couldn't remember that we hadn't noticed it up as a public meeting, but Members Swenson gave me a heads-up a day or two later, that I may have put some of the other folks on the council in an awkward spot by showing up out there. Members Sprague, and I actually talked about it in the afternoon, I said, are you going to go to Braemar tonight? We had something else we wanted to talk about, I think it was actually this issue, this issue of West Fifty-Fourth Street. He said, no, I've got Boy Scouts tonight. So when I got out to Braemar, I was looking around for everybody else, and no one else was there. I should have picked up a clue from that. So, you know, something happened I should have probably foreseen, but didn't, and that is that folks were appreciative that I was there, but they were upset that council people weren't there. And so, my apologies if I, you know, if, if you've gotten emails from anybody that was, that were critical, let me know. I want to write those people an email and tell them the straight school manager, Neil, did a good job of explaining why the council wasn't there. And, but I apologize if I created any kind of difficulties for anybody on the, on the council by showing up out there with the intention of just hearing what was going on with golf course operations, and sitting essentially back in the lunch area, as far back as I could get, but of course, you don't go unnoticed at a meeting like that.
I think that's what we talked about, about these, these non-public hearings, informational. When the council goes there, we do have an impact, even though we're trying to just observe, and we came to a conclusion along the way that best practice is to just not show up to those and let the public have their interface with the staff and the presentation. Isn't?
I think we haven't decided across the board, but we did, with the budget meetings that were held this year, that was the request that we not come, and there actually was a comment from the public saying that they felt that people could speak more freely because council members were not present and participating. And with this one, not only was it not noticed as a public meaning, meeting, meaning that we couldn't all be there because it hadn't been noticed as a public meeting, but we had, we, we definitely had discussed it in this context and agreed that with the other public hearings coming, the correspondence that we'll take, the conversations that we'll have with folks, we didn't want to shape, change this meeting by our presence.
So, on go-forward basis, are we taking this on a case-by-case basis?
I think we have to.
Okay, well, if we, if we do that, now, see, I couldn't even remember that, so somebody should send an email out saying.
I, I couldn't either, I just happen to have a conflict, so honestly.
So, actually, if you wouldn't have Boy Scouts, you'd have been out there, too.
Exactly.
Yeah, so.
I did inquire earlier in the day, and was reminded.
Right, we had a discussion that we were going to allow staff to do their presentation, and.
That's a good idea.
And I was going to call or email, you know, somebody else on the council, and I just, they got away from me, and I thought, well, I'll see people out there tonight.
Well, and I think it's important for people to know that we have been talking about Fred Richards for months, and, and so just to reassure them that we are well aware of the discussion, and we were handed notes from the meeting tonight, we are all getting emails, and I've had some great conversations with people via email about this, and letting them know that, nope, decision isn't made yet, and, and we've got a lot to talk about before the decision, and a lot of information and advice to get, but, but I think it's important for people to know that, that it is on the radar, and we do understand that it's something that, that we're going to make a decision on, and their comments are welcome.
As always.
As always.
I do think there's some misperception about the, it's my under, my memory, that we as a body expressed a consensus that the space, whatever its future, will remain public, open, spaced, parkland, not sold, not developed, and also not a road built through it. And I've seen some correspondence where people are saying, talking about it being developed on, and so I'm not sure where that information's coming from, but I wanted to make sure that people understood that that's not the case.
I can tell you that Manager Neil handled that issue very effectively at the meeting, and made it clear to folks at this council, as he said, it had no appetite for using this property for anything but a public purpose, so. But nonetheless, we still get the emails, I think it was one that came last Thursday from a lady who liked the idea of having it be a park, and, you know, but, but the inference was she thought we were going to sell it, or there was going to be commercial development there, and she'd better see a park with a playground and other things, so there still is an element of confusion out there. So, okay, well, let's, guess we'll just deal with this on a one-off basis, and maybe somebody can remind us, like the day of the meeting or the day before.
Okay.
You know, hey.
Buddy system, we're going to have to go on the buddy system, I can see this now, five of us in the buddy system is going to be a problem.
And it, but the, it's got to come from you, we can't be schmoozing with each other on that thing. All right, so, see, they had the official launch for Move Minnesota on the twenty-third, and, and they're rolling along. The Senator Franzen is on the legislative kitchen cabinet, and as I mentioned earlier, I think I'm on the local elected official and county officials' kitchen cabinet for this thing, as it gets cranked up to run statewide. Members Swenson and I had breakfast with our Minnehaw Creek Watershed District Representative Dick Miller and Jim Whisker from the staff over there on the twenty-fourth. We got a report on what they were working on in Hopkins and St. Louis Park, and there was some preliminary discussion about the potential for a trail coming through from, from St. Louis Park down in behind Todd Park, so.
Minnehaw Creek, following.
Yeah, following the creek.
Minnehaw Creek's watershed.
So, so that's something to be watchful on, and that was quite encouraging. It's, it's a ways out, but that, those seeds are planted apparently, and the Watershed Board is really interested in cook, you know, connecting us up to the Methodist Hospital work that they did, which was just quite extraordinary.
Well, the other thing is they showed how much investment they've made in land along that area, west of the hospital into the Hopkins, Blake Road area, where they're going to have the trail, and they're rebuilding housing and a whole neighborhood with a park, and, I mean, they've actually, as a watershed, bought property to redevelop around their watershed, which is a way different approach than they've had before, and it was very interesting to see it. And for an area that has some blighted properties, that cold storage along Blake Road is one of their purchases, it was pretty interesting.
Yeah, good. Twenty-fifth, my wife and I, we got invited over to Chinese New Year celebration at Creek Valley School. There were two hundred and fifty people there, Manager Neil and I went two years ago with our wives, well, did, you know, did your wife go, too? Yeah. Anyway, I, I got invited back, and I'd say two hundred and fifty people in there, I think two hundred of them live in Edina, which was really, it was, it was a great, a great evening, we had a wonderful time. And then there was, they do kind of a talent show or a celebration after the, after the dinner, where folks from the audience get up and entertain others with ballet dancing or opera singing, or whatever it might be, playing a flute native to, to China, wooden flute, a lot of good entertainment. On the Sunday, the twenty-sixth, Mayor Winstead, Mayor of New Hope, and I were on a panel for the League of Women Voters, Edina and Bloomington put an event on over in Bloomington. Yeah, Member Bennett was there, and that was, that was an interesting afternoon. And then, let's see, on the twenty-seventh, had the Transportation Policy Task Force were working, a group of county commissioners and local elected officials, met council members working on the long-range policy plan, transportation policy plan for the metro. And then that night, that evening, late that afternoon, Manager Neil and I met with Jay Lindgren to talk about some possibilities relative to February Southdale Hospital, you know, can we figure out some way to help them, it's still up in the air, is all I can say, as to whether we could or couldn't do anything. And that would just set the stage for a conversation, so. And then, we had the first of three MLC legislative breakfasts that I attended as the current chair on the thirty-first of January over in Eagan, and met with a bunch of legislators over there. I was discouraged by Mary Liz Holberg of Lakeville, who said this is a bonding year and the chance of getting the hundred and eleven million dollars that we're looking for from the state for Southwest LRT, for their ten percent. I, I left that meeting quite discouraged that anything would come of that. So, I hope that we get some alternative funding strategies. And then on Saturday morning, I saw Member Bennett, again, the League of Women Voters in Edina had a meeting over in the mayor's conference room with Senator Franzen, and kind of caught up with her and heard about some of the things that she wants to work on this session.
Mayor, did you get to read that draft Southwest LRT report recommending either Kenilworth or the MNNS North with some, some engineered solution?
Yeah, I've got, I've got it in my briefcase, and I haven't read it, I got to read it before the fifth, which is our next quarter management committee meeting. And I saw Commissioner McLaughlin today. and he said he thinks we'll get this all worked out in the next month. So that was encouraging. But I wanna look at that because I'm not sure that that, it's probably better on the reroute, from a reroute standpoint, because it's that grade. Member Bennett may know something about this because of the.
It still takes a number of properties in St. Louis.
Yeah, it's still, you still got the same inherent problems of taking businesses and taking homes and running by the.
Thirty-three.
Running by the, their Spanish immersion school, I think, and by their high school, so.
The ETC has asked for an update on rail issues because there is a question about if that, if the freight rail is rerouted, does it mean that we will get more traffic on the south because of what they will do to improve connections? And that's a, it's a real possibility. So I know that they've asked for an update, and I think that's part of why I've attended the meetings that I've attended. Cause I, I wanna see the light rail come in, but I also wanna see our folks protected too.
But we also need an update on the railroad operations. I know they're doing more at nights. I was also told that ownership changed at some point and that they were intending more intense use. That was from a client who lives on the, on the rail.
We have a request into Dave, excuse me, Dave Christensen from MinDOT Rail to come give the council a brief presentation.
So CP Rail isn't CP Rail anymore?
I, I don't know the answer to that question, but if anyone does, it's him, and he can talk about the potential impacts of that.
Okay.
Okay. That's it for me. Manager Neal?
Actually, I have one more thing that I'm gonna sneak in here, and that is that on Friday evening, Joni and I attended a women's leadership session with Melissa Franzen and a number of mayors and council members from neighboring cities. And it was, it was by invitation from Melissa Franzen. It was really nice. It was at Matsumiya, and we were joined with, with a couple of speakers and good questions and a good session. So it was just fun to, fun to meet up with other people who are doing the same thing we are.
What night was that?
Friday night. It was a women's event, Mayor.
Ron Earhart was there.
Ron Earhart was there. He crashed the party.
And the panelists were Becky Roloff, Executive Director of the YWCA, and Andrea Walsh, VP at Health Partners.
Thank you. I wasn't gonna come up with Andrea's name.
A very, very interesting discussion.
She was a YMCA board member.
Yes.
For the main association.
It was noted that both of the Ys were represented.
Oh.
Okay.
Forgot this too. Veep Grand Opening tomorrow.
We have Mr. Wallen waiting for us to finish our HRA stuff too.
We do.
Yes, and I'll just be very brief. A couple of you have mentioned the, the golf meeting. We did have a pretty good turnout at the golf public meeting on Thursday night. Fair amount of staff were there as well to support the presentation. That was very much appreciated. And I'm sure we will be hearing more from, from folks on, on all sides of that issue. It's more than just two sides, for sure. So we have, I think, tried to make very clear to them that this is a staff, a staff proposal in response to council direction that council hasn't seen yet, and council may or may not like when they, when they get it. So that's, we tried to put you in that position where you're gonna be able to hear staff input and, and feedback and input from, from other folks as well, so. I think that was clear. Where, where the mixed information comes, it will come, it's the nature of a challenging issue like this sometimes. Next week, Clerk Mangan and I, and I think a couple other people are taking a field trip to Plymouth. We're gonna take a look at the Plymouth process that they use for putting together their council packet. How they put their council packet together, the timeline, the staff review, et cetera, et cetera. See what we can learn there. And the last thing I'll tell you is that we are in the final interview process right now for chief building officials. We have our final interviews on Friday, and we have some very good candidates for that job, so optimistic.
Thank you. All right.
The Kirchmann's retiring in February.
I don't think he did.
Chad, have we formally recognized you since you got your.
I don't think you have.
Your permanent position, because I didn't think you had it two weeks ago. So may we all say congratulations. We're thrilled to have you permanently on board in that chair.
We look forward to many long nights of public hearing with you.
All right, anything further for the council? The council meeting stands adjourned.
Member Bennett, I mean, Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Brindle?
Here.
Here.
All right, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carry it. HRA minutes, January 7th.
Second. Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carry it. And then the final item is an action item, Director Wallen.
As a resolution, when, when Grandview District was initially created, a hazardous sub-district was created along with, to, to finance the removal of approximately 1.4 million dollars worth of hazardous substance that was within that district. The Grandview District itself has been decertified, and, and with that, the increment that was going into the Grandview District was, has been going into the hazardous sub-district in its place to pay off that, that 1.4 million dollars in debt. That 1.4 million has now been paid, and this, this secondary sub-district can now be decertified as well. These are kinds of things that, that in the past, staff used to be able to do. But Hennepin County is now requiring resolutions for any, any type of paperwork like this. So that's, Ellers drafted the resolution before you tonight, and could stand for questions.
All right, questions for Director Wallen? Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 201401, which is a resolution approving the decertification of the Grandview hazardous substance sub-district in the city of Edina. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carry it. When this resolution goes into effect and everything is decertified, any, you know what the tax implications are? In terms of flowing back into the general fund for the city portion?
What, the, the sub-district is, is, operates differently in that than the Grandview District. The Grandview District, as it's decertified, still has approximately about a half a million dollars in it that the city can, can use with, continue to use within that district. The hazardous sub-district is different in that all of the increment that went into the hazardous sub-district needs to be returned to Hennepin County. And then Hennepin County will again remit that back to the jurisdictions in the same way that, in the same proportions that taxes are remitted back to the school, city, county, and so forth.
So we haven't been banking this money like we have.
Yeah, no, I understood that it was used to pay off the debt, but I was wondering what, once it's decertified.
Right, this, this is more restrictive than, than within the, the district itself. So the city was not able to keep these, these funds, the hazardous sub-district funds, the same way that we were able to keep the Grandview District fund.
All right, anything else? The HRA meeting is adjourned.